Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, we're gonna get started. It is Tuesday, April 23rd, 2:09 PM. We are here for Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee Legislative Oversight Number 7 or L-0190060 Budget Oversight Hearing for Baltimore City Police Department. I am Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. It's nice to see all of you today, although many of you I do not recognize because your hair is abnormally long. I'm gonna do roll call first of council members on the committee. Do we have Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I see you're doing former Councilman Kiefer Mitchell.
Kiefer Mitchell.
Office hours.
Excellent.
Uh, Councilman Henry for District. Councilwoman Sharon Middleton, Vice President of the Council. 6th District.
6th District.
The Echo.
Mr. President, I mean, Mr. Chief. Echo.
I see you're growing an Afro, Mr. President.
Not by choice. In 7th grade, at least.
Costello, I can't hear you.
Is there audio working?
No, I think we're having technical difficulties.
Yeah, no, standby. Uh, I think he's just trying to work out the echo because it's between him and the staff.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
That's correct, Mr. President.
If you all in the same room, I think the best thing for you to do is for council services staffer to turn off your speakers completely. And then while I see Councilmen is moving rooms, never mind.
Oh, excuse me. Councilman Costello is moving to another room, so he should be back shortly. He should be back shortly. Okay, Kaylin, thank you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Excellent. I just needed one confirmation. Thank you. Okay, so Eric Costello present, Councilman Pinkett present, Councilman Henry present, Councilwoman Middleton present. Councilman Yitzhak Schleifer.
Yeah, I'm here.
Uh, Councilwoman Shannon Sneed.
Present.
Councilwoman Danny McCray.
Present.
Thank you. We also are joined by Council President Brandon Scott. I see Councilman Chris Burnett. Are you here, sir? Okay. Are there any other council members on the call?
Yep, it's Councilman Cohen.
Councilman Cohen, 1st District. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Councilman Burnett's here. Sorry, I was having a hard time on my meeting.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, we have, on behalf of Mayor Jack Young. Who do we have from the administration?
This is Nina Themelis, and then I believe Matt is also on the line, but he might be joining a little bit later.
Excellent. And then we have, on behalf of Council President Brandon Scott, it appears to be Kalen Young and Dominic McIlroy. Okay. All right, uh, let's get started. These are our monthly oversight hearings. Uh, Mr. Commissioner, and your team, thank you so much for taking time for us. Uh, we always appreciate having an opportunity to talk with you. Uh, first and foremost, uh, I think I speak for everyone on the council. Uh, we want to thank, uh, the men and women of the police department, uh, for what they're doing during this very challenging time. Uh, my hope for today was that we could adapt the format a little bit. Uh, this is the budget part. We'll be doing the, um, police oversight part after, uh, with Councilman Schleifer as Chair of the Public Safety Committee. Uh, I'd like to focus on kind of the standard budget stuff, but I'd also like to, uh, discuss from a budgetary perspective what the impact of COVID-19 is on the police department's budget, uh, for this year, uh, how overtime spending is related to that. And, uh, would also like to get into, uh, what we're spending on PPE, where we're at in terms of PPE, what our needs are, et cetera, and just make sure that you all are getting everything that you need. So with that, uh, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you and good afternoon. And, uh, before I start, can you and everyone hear me? All right, thank you. Mr. President, Chairman Costello, Chairman Schleifer, members of the city council, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this. With me today on this webex are members of my executive team and command staff. I have with me Deputy Commissioner for Operations Michael Sullivan, Deputy Commissioner, who's in my office, Deputy Commissioner for Administration Jim Gillis, Deputy Commissioner for Compliance Daniel Murphy, Deputy Commissioner for Public Security Brian NATO, Colonel Cherie Briscoe, Chief of Criminal Investigations, Colonel Richard World Chief Patrol, Chief of Staff Eric Malone, Deputy Chief of Staff Andy Smolian, Chief Financial Officer Charlotte Graham, Chief Technology Officer Woody Davis, Chief Data Driven Strategies Division, Director of Government Affairs Michelle Work. My team and I are civilian employees and most important department in the Baltimore Police Department, all working every day to further our core mission of in Baltimore City. As we carry out this important mission, we must also continue to enact within our department so that we are policing in a impartial and constitutionally effective manner. Over the last two months, for those great efforts in the midst of
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Commissioner Hank Tye, uh, could everyone on the call please mute yourselves? Everyone on the call, please mute yourselves. I'm gonna start calling people out. Andy Smolian, Bob, NATO, Casey Keller, Lieutenant Herzog, Stagman. Please mute yourselves.
Mr. Chair, we should be able to, uh, force mute everybody.
Oh, you can do that? Thank you, Dominic. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Please proceed.
You know, over the last two months, both efforts continued in the midst of a global public health crisis.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm muted. I, I am here. I, I got, oh, God. Just calling one ear after the
Mr. Mr. Chad, you, you only go post, Marguerite, you're gonna have to press the mute button.
Uh, yeah, sure. Um, so.
Let me know when we're ready.
Please proceed.
All right, thank you. Uh, the COVID-19 emergency has presented new and numerous challenges, including enforcing evolving orders from the governor and from the mayor, protecting the health and safety of our officers and the civilian workforce, and ensuring that we have the available staff and resources so that operations can go uninterrupted. Now, throughout this emergency, those undertaking have resulted in constant exercise of problem solving. For example, closing and disinfecting an entire district station while also reassigning personnel to ensure that those residents still have proper police coverage. We issued all of our officers with N95 masks while not affecting staffing. Continuing the training academies' operations while at the same time protecting our recruits, our officers, and our instructors through social distancing and remote learning. Similarly, allowing for our payroll clerks and social distance and telework, to telework, while at the same time making sure everyone's paycheck is accurate. So we are addressing these operational and administrative challenges on a continuous basis. Of course, we're not alone in dealing with this volume of issues. Most police departments across the country and most government agencies at every level and most sectors of our society are dealing with their own set of issues and challenges. We're all adjusting and adapting to this emergency, and BPD is no different. The safety of our, the safety and health of our employees, particularly those officers is my number one priority right now, and I'll do whatever is needed to ensure they are protected. To that end, I'll give you a brief. To that end, I'll give you a brief overview of how COVID-19 has impacted our department and the current year's budget. When we start the public safety hearing, I'll then discuss where BPD is on crime. So let me start on a personal and a somber note. This has been a tough week for the Baltimore Police Department. As we all know, Mr. Michael Baptis, a retired sergeant who became a background investigator in our Human Resources Department passed away. He is the first BPD employee and the first city employee to have died as a result of COVID-19, but he was much more than that. You know, Mr. Baptis was a well-known, well-loved part of our BPD family for decades. Many in our department, sworn and civilian alike, have been devastated by his passing. He served this city well and honorably, and we owe him a debt of gratitude for his commitment to public service. So our thoughts and our prayers are with his wife, his family, his loved ones, and colleagues during this difficult time. And so this has been a hard-hitting reminder to all of us of the personal cost that this virus is having on our community. And we must remain steadfast and resolute during this emergency and do all that we can to support one another. So now I'll transition into a brief budget overview. During pay period 21, BPD recorded $200,000 in overtime and straight time hours related to COVID-19. During the next pay period, we recorded $300,000 in overtime and straight time. We've also spent nearly $1 million in purchases and equipment related to our COVID response. The bulk of that has been for computers to allow some of our administrative employees to continue their work remotely. My team, working along with Chief Ford's team from the Fire Department and the Mayor's office, will be submitting an application to recoup as much of these funds as possible. Excuse me. Baltimore City has been allotted $2.7 million from the Department of Justice through the CARE Act. We're also eligible for reimbursements for emergency spending through FEMA and the Stanford Act. Additionally, we've received some much-needed stockpiles of PPE from our partners in government, local businesses, and city groups, who are very grateful for their generous donations for our first response. BPD will spend whatever is needed from within our current budget in order to protect our officers and deal with the current situation. However, we must plan and budget for the next fiscal year. As you are aware, the city is facing a significant projected deficit for both this year and current year and next fiscal year. BPD, along with every other agency of city governments, expected to anticipate reductions in our budget to help reduce that deficit. This will be far from painless, and the choices we must make will not be easy. However, my team and I are committed to finding options that do not affect core functions and do not have any negative effect on employment or pay for our officers. So I'll continue to work with the city finance officials and the mayor in order to fi-finalize these recommendations. So I'd like to conclude by stating that despite the challenging times we're in, we have navigated our way through a myriad of issues while at the same time keeping focus on our core mission. We continue to make progress for the department and are even pushing forward longstanding projects that are that are, that are important to the future of the department. You know, just yesterday, the Board of Estimates approved the lease for the SUN Building for use as a public safety center. For the last 18 months, the many women of the Central District have been effectively homeless as we've had to move them out of their uninhabitable former district station into police headquarters. The Central District will now have a state-of-the-art home with other operational units following. Improving the working conditions of our officers is a cornerstone of our crime plan and remains a top priority. This year, we've been able to move into a new training academy, and now we are taking care of relocating the Central District. There's still so much more to do, and I'm committed to continuing to improve the conditions for all of our members, and I'd like to thank the mayor and the Board of Estimates for their leadership on this issue. Now, next month, we will be coming back to the Board of Estimates for approval of a contract for a new records management system. This system will be the foundation in how this department operates. It will allow us to transition from inefficient paper-based reporting to a digital environment, saving time, saving manpower, better use, and directing that towards the crime fight. Additionally, it will allow for better case management, making connections between cases and intelligence share. It will also allow us to collect data necessary so we can comply with the mandates of the consent. This is a project that has been in the works for many months through a committee of decision-makers and focus groups of officers at every rank throughout the department who have tested several different systems. We have ultimately chosen a product and vendor that best meets our needs and are currently finalizing a contract. Chief Davis can speak more about that if you have any questions. Again, we're moving the ball down the field on multiple fronts while we deal with this current emergency as well as our existing challenges. To that end, I'd like to thank all of the many women of the Baltimore Police Department, both sworn and civilian, whose courage, professionalism, and dedication have allowed us to continue our work during these challenging times. I want to thank you for your time. Now I'm gonna hand this off to my Deputy Commissioner of Operations, Michael Sullivan, who'll give you a further overview of our pandemic response that you asked for, those efforts, and then we will have some additional slides on. One more.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, I just want to give you sort of an overview before we talk about numbers in the budget about what we've done during this COVID pandemic emergency. We started back on March 12th where we, uh, coordinated an internal working group, uh, which we call our COVID-19 Task Force that is working, uh, to, to work with the city and the EOC to coordinate our efforts. The efforts of that task force are on three fronts. Uh, the, the medical, uh, front, and then we're also working with logistics, getting the, the equipment that we need, and we're also, uh, working on planning, what we have to do to plan to go ahead, uh, through the, uh, through the duration of this incident. So prior to the establishment of that task force, we'd already given out guidance on responding to calls for service and protect-protective measures, uh, along with guidance from the CDC on the COVID virus. Uh, on March 17th, we, uh, gave guidance on a modified response to calls, uh, emphasizing online reporting, and when possible, we wanted our folks to handle calls by telephone, uh, when immediate police response was not necessary. On March 18th, we modified our arrest and warrant procedures. On March 18th, we also restricted public access to our facilities, uh, to further protect, uh, the workforce. March 19th, we gave guidance on roll calls and social distancing, requiring roll calls to be held outside weather permitting. Uh, workspaces, uh, were adjusted to maintain social distancing and limiting access to the facilities for those who work in there and only have people in those areas that have official business. On March 26th, we started distributing N95 masks, and we've distributed over 3,000, uh, N95 masks uh, to all of our employees and have 2,000 on hand at this time. On April 6th, we, uh, put out an order requiring our officers to wear N95 masks in all public interactions. On April 18th, uh, we required all personnel to have face coverings when they were in common areas of BPD facilities or worked in close proximity to other folks. We've distributed, uh, washable face coverings to our civilian, uh, personnel and have over 20,000 surgical masks on hand at this time. Currently, our, our status today is we have 17 members that are actively being quarantined uh, for some sort of exposure or travel. That total number of quarantine over this entire event has been 360 of our members. Uh, we've had 26 confirmed cases. Of those 26 confirmed cases of COVID, 22 of our employees have returned, uh, back to work. Of that, the Southwest District, which the Commissioner spoke about, accounted for nine of our 26 confirmed cases. Uh, we removed all those folks immediately, uh, and had a screening process with John Hopkins that allowed us to get the, the district, uh, back to work very, very quickly and maintain service to the Southwest District. I, uh, started a daily call with the leadership of the department at the beginning of this incident where we, uh, talked about any rumors. Uh, we gave them what the, uh, the current operational status of the department was and answered any questions for the leadership of the department. Uh, finally, uh, I've had open lines of communications with the FOP through this event. Uh, they've, uh, given us feedback, what they're hearing, uh, challenges that they think, uh, that we're facing, and we've been able to address some of their concerns with that, that daily tempo, uh, with our labor, labor organization. So, uh, that concludes. Thank you, Councilman.
Hey, guys. Jim Gillis here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, um, I'm gonna pick up where Deputy Commissioner Sullivan left off in terms of some of the budget numbers with regard to COVID specifically. If you have your PowerPoint in front of you, you can go to page, slide 5, I should say, and you'll see there that, uh, so far, year-to-date since this event started, which we started calculating essentially on March 12th, um, and included some things prior to that, though, in, into this, into these totals, we've been tracking the spending amount in terms of procurement, as well as spending on personnel in terms of salaries and overtime. And it's, that's essentially been two pay periods that we have concluded since the beginning of this state of emergency. And overall, on personnel, you'll see that we spent about a half a million dollars. And how we are tracking that is we created six different account codes so that we can have specific and accurate accounting for people who are working straight shifts that is specifically related to COVID, for example, the task force that Deputy Commissioner Sullivan mentioned, and then any overtime that goes beyond the straight shift or any overtime associated with COVID, whether it is business checks, for example, or, uh, making sure that folks are, are trying to make sure that folks are practicing social distancing. Um, and so we've been tracking that both for sworn enforcement and then sworn and civilian non-enforcement. And so that is what the six account codes account for. The total value is about a half a million dollars overall between the two, uh, pay cycles. You can see the amount of hours that have been utilized with regard to both sworn and civilian. Um, and then if you look at the other side of the slide, you'll see the non-personnel section involves all of the things that the agency has procured or is in the process of procuring related to COVID so far, and you'll see a great visual there of the breakdown of everything from technology to cleaning, and what that means is that any time that we have an event where there is a possible person who is infected or something like the southwestern district, we have a specific protocol for a cleaning company, a disinfecting company, uh, that either comes through a contract that we have or through DGS, whichever is faster to come through and clean the workspace, clean the car or the vehicle or whatever was utilized by that person. And you can see, uh, that accounts for 4% of the spending so far. Tactical equipment is a category on there. What that includes are things, uh, for our mobile field force, any kind of gear that would be needed to deal with any kind of civil unrest if we were to come to that point. We just want to be as prepared as possible, um, given this event, and so far, we have everyone, I think, across the city has recognized, for the most part, the severity of this, and we should, hopefully should never get to that point, but that is what that accounts for. PPE obviously are goggles, gowns, gloves, and hand sanitizer. 13% of the spending so far has been related to that. Um, and then miscellaneous includes other things related to the mobile field force and other things like that. I can give a more specific breakdown if you guys need that. A big chunk of the spending so far has to do with technology. You'll see on there laptops and technology generally that it, that includes remote desktop and different software and hardware that we need for our workforce to be able to work from home. And so since this event happened, we have about 535 civilian employees in the agency, and about 40% right now are working from home. They're teleworking. We're trying to have as many folks telework as possible.
Hey, Jim.
Yes.
Hey, uh, I think the presentation was up on the screen and then it came off.
Okay.
Can you, uh, put, put that back up? Yeah, please and thank you.
Marg-Marguerite was managing that, I think. Okay, there you go.
You'll see that the technology procurement, that is mostly related to enabling our civilian workforce to continue to work from home. And so from the very beginning, the mandate for this has been to be safe and healthy in our work environment, whether it's in the office, as the Deputy Commissioner just described, or from home. And that means getting as many people who are, have the capability to telework home to work, so they don't have interaction with other, other individuals. Giving them that capability is what you see the expense for right there. You know, it's, that's over, that's, that's about $800,000 worth of procurement so far with, throughout this event. I think I speak for all of us and, and for everyone in the, in the city that obviously, especially for the, the frontline responders like the police, we're, you know, committed to making sure that they are safe in doing their job, no matter what that expense is. And as the Commissioner touched on in his remarks, you know, we are tracking this so closely with, with the expectation that we will, um, recoup a lot of this in terms of whether it's through the federal government, MEMA, FEMA, or any of the stimulus packages, which we've been working closely with the administration and through the Emergency Operations Center to, uh, to keep track of it and ultimately choose the best path that we can to recoup as much as possible. The idea is to keep the workforce as safe as possible because it is obviously a critical function that can't not happen. And the safer that we are, the safer that the folks who we serve are as well. Um, that is the, the basic breakdown with regard to COVID spending, whether it is on personnel or, uh, stuff, for lack of a better word, on supplies to equip our, our troops out there and for our people at home and people in the building. There are a couple of slides about regular overtime. Mr. Chairman, I can
You hold for once again?
Absolutely. Yes, Mr. President.
Wait, can we have the actual budget slide of the numbers in front of us, please? It just, we just have the general, the general one up. Can we get to the budget, the actual budget?
That, that's it right there.
Thank you. Uh, no, go back one. No, the other way.
Whoever's controlling it's gotta go backwards a couple of slides. You're going forward, unfortunately. Whoever's controlling it's got to go backwards a couple of slides. You're going forward, unfortunately.
It's the one that just says budget.
Stop right there.
Right there.
Back one.
Excuse me, I think the problem is I was taken off as host and I cannot do certain things, Kaylin. Can you put me back on host?
That wouldn't be the source, but I can make you host if you think that will help.
It's slide five.
So just, just...
Is that the one?
We seem to be having some technical difficulties. All the council members have all these... All the handouts in their inbox.
Deputy, you can continue. Michelle emailed that we can just look at it in our boxes, but we were trying to make it so that folks can actually see it on the screen. That's the right screen right there.
Thank you, Mr. President. When you're able to pull it up, you all will see that the total between personnel and non-personnel is about $1.3 million of spending so far with regard to COVID. Again, some of the personnel spending is related to overtime and specific overtime details that were created to deal with what is going on. Deputy Sullivan can talk to them if there are any questions about them specifically, but I know that we are pulling back a little bit because if you look at the way that everything is trending, it is, things have fallen more into a rhythm now. And so we will offer the overtime details as they are needed, but it's my understanding we're going to pull back a little bit. So for the overtime spending there, it should go down a little bit, but obviously, we can't predict the future. If there are any specific COVID spending questions, we can answer them now. We can wait till the end of the presentation. But the next two slides are just regular fiscal year-to-date overtime expenditures. It is the regular chart that we usually show at the council presentations. The highlighting points are that last year, for fiscal year 19, we spent $48 million, about a little over $48 million on overtime. This year, in fiscal year 20, we're projected to spend a little bit over $41 million in overtime. So year-to-date, we're about, so far, $4.8 million below where we were this time last year in the fiscal year. That's a 12% reduction in overtime spending. We would be even lower at the end of this fiscal year if we had implemented the overtime policies that we did implement at the middle to end of last summer earlier, prior to this pay period. So when you ultimately see the visual, you will see a dramatic reduction in overtime spending after about pay period eight, pay period nine. That directly correlates with the overtime policies that we put into place. There was a baseline number of $1.6 million that we did not want to go over per pay period, meaning every two weeks. It's only been once or twice, but I think once where we've gone over that, and that was with regard to the marathon. And so we've been at or below what city finance has given us as a baseline since we implemented the overtime policy. And we, you know, our expectation for the agency is to continue doing that going forward in perpetuity for whatever operational necessity is needed. So that is positive news there. And that is the very brief overview of both the COVID spending and just general overtime spending as well.
Thank you, Chief Gillis. Mr. Commissioner, anything else?
No, nothing else for me on this topic at the moment, sir.
So Jim, or Mr. Commissioner, I apologize if I missed it. So where are we at in terms of PPE for the department?
Every sworn member of the agency had, well, just about every sworn member, unless they are not working because they're on military service or they're out on permanent medical or something like that, has PPE. We have it for them. They should have acquired it. I know it's been over 3,000 PPE packets. Again, that includes face masks, gloves, eye protection, and sanitizer. If we have it for certain instances, gowns has been distributed so far. So over 3,000, that's over the amount of sworn members we have for the agency. And as Deputy Commissioner Sullivan noted earlier, we have been building a stockpile that we can continue to replenish this as we need to going forward. I should also mention that we've distributed over, I mean, the last count was over 300 of the car kits. And the car kits go in the patrol cars, and then we've been moving into CID and other operational units too. The car kits are essentially a box that contains PPE as well as disinfectant, wipe down the vehicle between shifts and whenever else is needed. Those contain more PPE plus the disinfection that is needed so that the cars can be continually operated going forward. And so that also has been a constant replenishment since before March 12th, actually. And so we are always looking to build the stockpile bigger than it already is. So we always are looking for more, but that is the baseline right now. We've given out, we've distributed enough for everyone who's working right now.
And Mr. Chairman, one last thing. The reason we were able to move so quickly in distributing those resources to all of the police cars, the district stations, and the divisions is because the department, at the very beginning, had a stockpile already in our possession from the last event. So the department was somewhat prepared. We were one of the first in the state in the region to start sending stuff down to vehicles to sanitize. And one of the first things we did was to immediately begin social distancing and doing away with some of the training and moving to remote and e-learning training. We were the first department in the state to do remote and e-learning training and one of the first, among the first in the country that caught the attention of a bunch of chiefs around America who then began to call and ask, well, how are you able to do that? And so despite some of the technological deficiencies that the department has had historically, we were prepared and in a way able to get in front of all the sheriffs and police departments in the state and many from, most from around the country to move to almost total e-learning and remote learning and distance learning for not just in-service but for recruit training with all of our classes with no interruptions, might I add. And really, one of the first in the state to really start sending equipment and stockpile supplies down to the officers because we actually had a stockpile already ready when this thing first began. And then, as you heard Deputy Gillis say, it's about replenishing that stockpile. We think we are okay, but we're constantly ordering to make sure we can keep it built up so that we don't run out and then have to be in a rush to rearm.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner, from a policy perspective, what's being done to ensure that police officers understand the need to wear PPE when engaging with citizens as well as just having their face mask on in general?
We've done multiple instructional videos. So it wasn't just giving them clear guidance. We gave them clear written guidance, but we thought it was necessary to put into high-def videos, not just from me, but from members of the department demonstrating how to clean equipment, how to sanitize a vehicle, and how to use the equipment. And so we've given clear guidance in writing and through instructional video on how-to, which also kind of swept the country and had chiefs calling wondering about how we did that. And now they've adopted that because we were kind of leading in that area. And so we continue to do that every week, sending out guidance of what to do, when to do it, and how to do it so that our people can stay safe. And though we've had now, I think, 26 confirmed cases, I think the department has done a good job with a department this size in minimizing the exposure and then really teaching the officers about how to prioritize their... You'll hear us talk about this in the public safety section, how to prioritize contact, but still making sure we're being very proactive, making sure we're engaging, how to prioritize our efforts to minimize exposure while we're practicing social distances and wearing PPE.
Mr. Chairman, this is Michelle. I've sent out the videos, the training videos to everyone. If you need me to resend them, I'm happy to do that.
If you could please send it to me. I must have missed that one. I apologize. Thank you, Mr. President.
It's about four or five different videos that we...
Okay, thank you. Mr. President, you're up next. And colleagues, if you have questions, you can just send me a private chat through the WebEx application.
Use the wave your hand.
Wave your hand function. That works too.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and Deputy Commissioners. Just a couple of questions. First, I want to go to Deputy Commissioner Gillis was talking about the car kits. I want to go a little deeper on that. Want to see the amount of car kits that we have, how long those car kits actually last. Like, if it goes in a car today, how long have we got seen that it will last before you have to replace it? And then also, how many do we have in order to replace them as needed?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm trying to read this little spreadsheet. We get a daily report on the car kits. We've tried to be, I think we all feel very strongly about making sure that the officers are equipped to do the job that we're asking them to do. And so it's been really, really important that we track everything that we're giving out and also... And so that means we've created some pretty robust tracking systems with regard to the big picture items, but also to the specifics. And what that means is that, for example, with PPE, we have a master spreadsheet of every single person in the entire agency with specific items that they've been given. So we know who has gotten what and we know when people are being need replenishment. With regard to the frequency of the car kits, I don't have that answer right off the top of my head, but I can tell you that the total number of kits distributed so far is 563. And then there have been no kits issued since yesterday. I can't speak for right at this moment in time. And then there are 66 kits in the stockpile available for distribution at any time that we need it. And that is something that we are constantly building. And the reality that I think that we're all coming to realize is that this is probably something that will go on in perpetuity for, at least for a while anyway. So it is something that it's really important to keep the stockpile really as robust as possible. And we see nationally that that has been such a really insane problem, obviously, with getting stuff. So that is where we are as a snapshot as of today.
Mr. President, that number that Gillis just gave represents the second iteration because a few weeks ago, there were 250 kits reported distributed. So if we now surpass 500, that's the second iteration of kits. And so we're constantly rebuilding the stockpile to redistribute those.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Mr. Commissioner and Mr. Deputy Commissioner. That was the reason for the line of question. Just wanted to make sure that if we needed to do something on our end, to make sure that you guys have that so that we're not having, you know, cars run out or people run out of that. Just making sure that we're in a way are monitoring that. The second thing I want to talk to you about, and I think, as you mentioned, for the size of the department and for a city the size of Baltimore, when you look in comparison to other cities, I think that we've made out pretty well, so to speak, is I guess, for lack of a better word, I wish that no one actually tested positive. But of course, we know that it happens as we go through this crisis. But wanted to talk about, like, the plans. And I've been talking with this with the Colonels on our weekly updates too. But knowing that we had this incident, that you and I actually spoke a couple of days before the decision had to be made in Southwest, can you talk about how you guys have been planning for the, hopefully, never-to-happen incident where we have this happen in maybe one or two districts at a time? How you guys have worked the plan and think those things out to make sure that we're still providing service for the citizens of Baltimore?
Yeah, we have a planning section that works on that every day. That's their job to make sure logistically and financially and with resource allocation, how we do that. And though we have an internal mechanism and an internal planning that's not a public-facing plan, we're still working on a contingency plan that should we begin to see COVID or any other issue affect us where it reduces our staffing level on a daily basis or shift by shift, where we get to certain percentages where we know it becomes to be a negative effect, then we can move resources around how we do that, who we tap to move around and where we pull them from, and what services we have to either consolidate, collapse, or move around to accomplish that. So those are things that we work on internally with our contingency plan, not just for COVID-19, but now for anything that could possibly come our way, where we have to shut a platoon down or shut an entire station down, how we move resources in so that we don't have interruption in services. And so that's, those are things our planning section works on, but those are things the Deputy Commissioner of Operation and his team, along with me, work on constantly to make sure that there's continuity of operations regardless of anything, whether it's COVID, whether it's civil disturbance, whether it's the flu. And as a matter of fact, we had a situation like that at the academy where an entire class had flu symptoms and we had to suspend that and do something different and then bring them back online a week later when all the symptoms were gone. And none of them tested positive, by the way, but we actually were tested with that at the police academy.
Thank you. Thank you for that. My next question, and I've seen the videos, and thank you. I think that's a great way for us to communicate what the women of the department should be doing. But we know, and I don't want you, of course, to go into the detail. I wanted to say thank you for responding immediately. We know we had this incident with the officer and coughing and not having on PPE. Can you talk about just in general, like, how you guys are handling things like that to make sure that the public knows that you guys are taking these things very seriously?
Well, first of all, thank you for that. When that was brought to my attention, the first thing I did was contact the Public Integrity Bureau, my Deputy Commissioner of Public Integrity. An investigation was immediately launched into that incident, and the officer was immediately removed from his assignment and put on administrative duties pending the outcome. And so I was very transparent to the members of our department that that is unacceptable. It's going to be investigated, and he's not going to be performing his normal duties while the investigation is going on. That's number one. Number two, we had to communicate that to the community at large. I was actually on a number of talk radio shows where I brought that up, that the officer, sergeant, rather, was actually removed and put on administrative duties pending the outcome of that investigation. You know, we take those things very seriously and, you know, there are concerns, there are concerns across the country as I talk to other police chiefs about what to do when citizens cough on officers. But we have to have equal concern about something that would have happened in reverse where we now have a video of our officer coughing, whether it was malicious or intentional or not. a video of our officer coughing, whether it was malicious or intentional or not, we take it seriously and it's under investigation. Uh, and then it's, it's a priority of mine. It's a priority of Deputy Commissioner Nato at the Public Integrity Bureau.
Thank you. Thank you. And it, that's, I have two more things, questions, and I'm done until we talk about crime. Uh, the other, other point that I want to bring up is just the opposite. We also, you and I spoke about, uh, the video with some, uh, young people surrounding officers. Can you talk about how we're communicating with the women and men, uh, to keep themselves safe and also dealing with what is clearly inappropriate behavior of Indian people?
Yeah, that's a good question. We've, we've been giving guidance to the officers about how to prioritize their contact and engagement to minimize exposure to themselves and to the, the, the public, the, the citizens in the public, how to minimize that exposure. So we gave clear guidance, and when it comes to proactive engagement or engagement, we still have to practice social distancing. So you, your first Deputy Commissioner Sullivan say, we adjusted the call, the call procedures where when we arrive on calls, you know, we're meeting people outside, and if we have the need and urgent need to go inside of a closed dwelling, you know, we don't certain equipment and we practice the, the best practices about how to do that during a pandemic. That's number one. But two, the officer did a spectacular job, in my opinion, professional and personal, on using restraint in that situation and minimized exposure to himself and minimized exposure to those young people. But we take that seriously, that they were taunting the officer and that to the extent that a crime was committed, it was looked into and investigated. And so we're giving guidance to the officers about how to prioritize, how to use good judgment, and how to minimize exposure to other people and to themselves. Uh, and so those are just things we just don't want to put ourselves in the middle of if we don't have to. When it is necessary for us to do that, we will do it. And you're hearing the crime presentation that the officers are still being very proactive and very engaging to make sure we, we, uh, are engaged in this crime fight and make sure that people are behaving and following the rule of law.
Thank you. And last one, uh, we talked about, uh, Deputy Commissioner Sullivan talked about like the working group around COVID and how people are to report. Uh, but as you know, I talked to you about this a little bit too. Uh, when, when we have sometimes we see, seeing that some officers feel as though, uh, their concerns around COVID or coworkers are not being heard. Can we talk about what we can do to, to reiterate to them how they should be coming to command and folks like yourself in this, uh, working group so that we can try to keep everyone as safe as possible to try to avoid things like we had in Southwest?
Say that one more, say that one more time, please?
Yeah, just, just to, for some, uh, women and men of the department who may feel like they, you know, are concerned, but they don't feel like if they elevate that their voices are going to be heard, what would you say to them to make sure and reassure them, uh, that, uh, we know that you guys are taking it seriously, but let them know that you're taking these things seriously, so that we can try to avoid having these hurt things in the future?
Yeah, that's a good point. Number one, we, we're always giving, giving guidance through written correspondence, through video messages from me and from others, other leadership in the department, and we're doing that multiple times a week. Secondly, we have, uh, Emergency Operations Center that's up and running with members staffing it, that are taking calls, emails, and our phone issues about what officers and supervisors are seeing in the field. Number three, we created, uh, an email account for officers, and we've pushed that out. We'll continue to do that for them to express their concerns, to ask questions, uh, about what they need to know. And they can send that right into the EOC through that designated private email. And so we wanted to have a line of communication for them to voice their concerns and ask their questions, and then get those answers back to them because there could be scenarios where they're seeing things out on the front line that may take us longer to see. And we got to hear straight from our personnel. So those are just the, some of the things that we're doing to make sure we can hear them, hear from them, and get the answers to their questions back to them in real time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I do not see any hand waves. Oh, hang on. I don't see any hand waves, but I did get a question from Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you. Yes. I was just wondering when we talked about, um, getting the protective, uh, equipment, and you may have said it early on, um, are we going in with the fire department and other agencies, or was just, uh, this, this, um, for just the police department?
Well, the fire, first of all, first of all, thank you for that question. The fire department was gracious enough to give us, uh, several thousand of their N95 masks that they had in stockpile. And as we order equipment, you know, the city is ordering equipment, uh, with all public safety in mind, with police, with fire, with EMS, with other people from the Health Department and other city agencies who might need it. And so, yes, we are asking from, for private vendors, for, you know, from government, the federal government, state government, every opportunity for us to get equipment, it's coming in to the city and then being distributed to all public safety, everybody who actually uses it and needs it. So it's not just police asking for it, although we, we do put our own requests and buy and pay for PPE. There are, uh, other avenues where PPE is coming in and then equally distributed among all public safety and frontline, frontline workers.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, uh, I, I'd be happy to give, this is, uh, Sunny Schnitzer, Deputy Chief of Staff for Public Safety. Um, if it's helpful, I'm happy to give a quick overview of the process for requesting PPE citywide. Um, so what happens is individual agencies are, um, will submit a request based on their needs, um, the type of equipment they need, and they project it for 30 days into web EOC. We track that information, and, uh, we have folks working here, um, on, I think 12 hours a day, seven to seven, to, to receive those requests, uh, and then process them and fill them. So all of the requests citywide come into a central, uh, location. Um, we also do citywide purchasing and ordering based on those requests that come into web EOC. Uh, that doesn't preclude individual agencies from doing their own ordering, uh, but everything that comes into the city for COVID purposes for PPE goes into a central stockpile that's controlled, uh, by the Health Department and by, um, the emergency management team. It's assessed by necessity, uh, and priority, and is delivered, um, usually within a matter of a couple of hours to the agencies when they request it, assuming we have it in stockpile.
Oh, wow. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Schleifer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Commissioner, can you, um, can we talk a little bit about the Central District move? I, you, you mentioned in your opening statement. Um, and I was just curious a little bit about the costs. I've, I've read a variety of costs on that, so I was wondering if you could just tell us, you know, what it's going to cost, how long term the contract is, um, how much it's going to cost to outfit the space?
Yeah, sure. I'm going to ask, uh, Deputy Commissioner Gillis to, to take that. He's been kind of leading that initiative for us, and thank you for that.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the question. Uh, obviously, any specific details I would direct you towards City Finance, of course, and City Real Estate, who are the umbrella, if you will, for the entire city on this. With regard to the Police Department specifically, the costs in the first year are just over a million dollars, and that money that is being utilized to pay for that is coming from asset forfeiture funding. Um, the term of the lease is, I believe, up to four years for what was approved yesterday, but then within 18 months, a new lease will be renegotiated, or we are able to find something else. And so obviously, the hope is that a, um, more consolidated, bigger picture, uh, bringing in everyone who was talked about yesterday into the entirety of this unbuilding is the ultimate goal. For the Central District going in there in the beginning, those are the costs associated with. And I can get you the specific details, uh, for you after this, absolutely.
So is one million the build out, or one million is the actual lease per year?
You'd have to direct that question to City Finance, but there's actually not too much build out that exists with regard to it. It is mostly for the cost of the lease. That if you get the opportunity to do a tour of the place, it is actually, almost seems like it's ready-made for a public safety facility, interestingly enough. And as a matter of fact, I believe it's Philadelphia, I think it's Philadelphia or Wilmington, that the exact same scenario occurred where there was a former, uh, newspaper that vacated a giant facility like this, that included everything, and now it has been taken over as the Public Safety Basically Command Center for the city.
So how come there's been reports that it would cost as much as over $2 million a year?
I'd have to, you'd have to show me the reports, and then we could talk about it.
Well, it's in the Baltimore Sun. I'll, I'll send that over to you. And then, and then I guess my second question on that, um, is about the asset forfeiture money. Isn't that by code supposed to be spent, uh, in the community?
So if you're referring to the city ordinance, I believe that, uh, Lisa Wadden, who is our chief, uh, legal counsel, has looked into that a little bit with regard to this specific funding source. This is federal asset forfeiture money, and there are specific, uh, it's called the Equitable Sharing Act, the Department of Justice and Department of Treasury. There are specific uses that you can utilize the funding for, and you also have to get approval from the federal government. And in this particular case, leases for a public safety facility are one of them. We did talk to the Department of Justice, who did give approval to use it for this purpose.
And does that?
And if I could, I'll just add one other thing with regard to, I believe, the city ordinance from, uh, I guess it's like, uh, 10 years or so ago, involves a outward-facing, community-based type spending. I would just say that the plans for the new Central District in the larger scope of the some paper building do have a space for a community use, and that is a community, outward-facing community space that can be utilized by the community as well as an auditorium-type place. It's a similar feel to what we tried to do in the Western District.
And so where, where did that money previously go to? Was that money that went to the general fund, this forfeiture money?
The federal asset forfeiture money, the fiduciary of it, is the, the chief, chief law enforcement officer of the city. And so it does, that, that pot of money does not go into the general fund. I believe that the ordinance that you are referring to is state asset forfeiture money, which does ultimately go into the general.
Gotcha. Um, and also, as far as, uh, this lease is concerned, so is it a one-year with options up to four years, or is it a, a four-year lease? That wasn't clear to me.
One year with, uh, one year with options with the anticipation of renegotiating in 18 months. But again, for the specific details, I would ask you to talk to the City Finance.
Gotcha. The City Finance in this hearing? Mr. Chairman, is there anybody from Finance here?
I don't believe so. Nina?
Uh, we did have Bob Sennemy on the line earlier. I, he's no longer appearing as one of the panelists, so I can try and get him back on the line, but he doesn't appear to be on the, on the line any longer.
All right, I'll, I'll save that for next hearing then. Thank you.
Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and thank you, Commissioner. The, um, Deputy Commissioner Sullivan mentioned earlier about the changes and calls to service and modified response. Can someone speak to, I guess, the protocols as it relates to, um, addressing drug dealing, social distancing, and then dealing with nonessential businesses that continue to remain open?
Yes, Colonel Worley is going to address that for you.
Yeah, this is, this is Colonel Worley. Our, our response to the drug dealing still remains the same. We go there, um, if we have the power to make an arrest, we do, uh, observe a violation, we will make an arrest. We actually made four CBS violation arrests yesterday. It went through central booking. However, if we find that we, we make, we stop someone and then we find the drugs on them, and it's more appropriate to seize the drugs and take their information, we will seize their drugs, take their information, get the drugs tested, and go seek a warrant, um, for the individual. So we try not to make the arrest if we, um, if we have an alternative way of doing it. Um, but sometimes people just have to still go to jail throughout their dealing the drugs. And then we had an issue early on where we had a case that got released and the charges dropped, um, and we went back and got a warrant for that individual. So we, we are working away, the police are very, very, uh, able, we are very much able to adjust to anything. So we, we adjust to whatever conditions we deal with to continue to do our job. As far as social distancing, we have a whole protocol and plan, multiple step plan for people who do not wish to abide by the social distancing guidelines. We will pull up, play the video. We play the audio across the PA. We can turn our sirens on. We continue to play the audio. And, and for the most part, the people will disperse. We have a, basically a task force of units out each night that responds to large crowds and essentially does that. They send, uh, me pictures of the crowds before and after the video is played, and everyone they're sending, the crowd usually disperses. If we find a business that's in violation, the officer will call the vice unit. Vice unit comes over, takes the information, and then we can issue them a citation.
Thank you. I, I want to, I want to commend, um, your officers for the work that's, I'm, I'm actually at Penn North now, that's happening at Penn North despite the challenges. Um, but I do have a question. Um, are you all receiving any support from either the Health Department or homeless services, um, to make certain that the message is getting out and that people are getting the resources that they need?
Yes, we have a very good relationship. We still have our homeless outreach team, our crisis intervention team. So they work with the, the homeless outreach team of the city, and we work with the Health Department through the EOC. Everything that we do, um, as far as needing the other agencies, goes right through the EOC because the Health Department is the incident commander for this, this entire incident throughout the city. We are just one component of it as far as the, the health issue and this whole pandemic. The Health Department is the lead agency in all this.
Hey, Councilman Pinkett, if I may, good afternoon.
Yes.
Question about the businesses that are in violation. Um, we have had businesses that have, um, um, of, of course, not, um, abided by the governor's order. Our goal, of course, is to try to get voluntary compliance. The goal is really to keep everyone safe. Uh, so when, during this event, we've had 24, um, businesses that we've had to address. And we do that, we go out as a part of the Social Club Task Force. Just as Colonel Worley stated, there's a protocol that the officers follow to include providing a copy of the governor's order to the business to get voluntary compliance, and then identifying, uh, what the violation may be. We've had 24 businesses that we've addressed with different levels of violation, um, and they've ranged from nonessential businesses to, uh, liquor board violations, to, uh, wanting legal nightclub, and we've taken 24 different actions to include warnings, um, and issued different citations along the way. So our team, um, is working with patrol to address those challenges. And so we have gotten some of that, um, information directly from the community and some from the officers being out, um, doing their, their daily patrol.
And if you've been there, if you, if you stay at Penn and North much longer, you'll probably end up seeing the, if you haven't seen it yet, the truck from the NAACP come through there. Um, they are assisting us with the social distancing messages. Um, they're going to come through. There's a large truck that comes through with the sign, and then they play their own audio, uh, questioning that people abide by the governor and the mayor's order.
Yeah, I'm, actually, I've been up here for about three hours now, and if not for the work of your men, um, none of the crowds would have been dispersed. Um, so that's why, uh, you know, I did commend Western District for, you know, their efforts that they're doing. Um, I was hoping to, to hear some sort of audio, but, um, none of that's happened so far. But, um, um, I just encourage your men to keep doing the work that you're doing. I know it's challenging, um, because people just come back after they disperse them, but, um, just keep doing what you're doing.
You might hear it soon because they're right behind you.
I see the lights behind. Then you might hear it also.
Well, Councilman Pinkett, I won't leave the women out either. They're doing a good job too.
Absolutely. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, colleagues, any other questions on the budget side of things? Colleagues, one last call. Any other questions on the budget side of things? Mr. Commissioner, uh, members of the Police Department, thank you all very much for making time for us and for all the great work that you're doing. Uh, Councilman Schleifer, I am going to turn it over to Uh, Councilman Schleifer, I am going to turn it over to you and go on mute. Kalen, I don't know if you want to note that this is the start of a different hearing or how you want to handle that. Thank you.